Alright, go ahead. Alright, everyone can stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic, a free justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Alright, welcome everyone to the Wakefield Planning Board Meeting, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Charlie is not here, but he is a selectman and we don't have another selectman's rep to sit for him, so we don't need any alternates at this point. We have a public hearing that is going to be continued to June fifth. It's a major site plan review submitted by the Novius Group of Concord on behalf of Shanna Wood and Province Lake Road Solar for a property located at Province Lake Road and Perkins Hill Road. Plus you. So that will be heard on June fifth. So moving on, we have a couple of conceptual reviews, so Scott Frankworth, is that how you pronounce your name correctly? Old Stage Road something. So before we get started, just a reminder that conceptual reviews, like nothing that we say or you say is binding here tonight, so if you choose to go forward, you have a public meeting, we would essentially start the process at that point.
Yeah. I don't know how you do it with plans, if I can hand plans out or not.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So if you want to just give us an explanation of where this is, what you're looking to do.
There's some large, larger ones, if anybody's interested. So my name's Scott Frankworth, National Land Consultants. The property's at six hundred Old Stage Road, it was property that Tom Dewey purchased before he passed away. It's owned by Watertown Village LLC now. Ellen Hayes was gonna be here, but she wasn't available to come.
Okay.
So it's an existing parcel, it's twenty-six, just over twenty-six acres, has a house, two barns on it, with frontage, about eleven hundred feet of frontage on Old Stage Road and about twenty-two hundred feet of frontage on Marsh Road.
Okay.
So what, and I've looked through your regs, but I haven't completely digested them yet, but what they'd like to propose is an open space development.
Okay.
Where they create four lots on Old Stage Road and put over thirteen acres into an open space, either easement or however the town does that. There is on, at the bottom of the hill on Marsh Road, across the street, there is a fishing game piece that's protected already and it's kind of connected to this, there's... So it's kind of in a corridor that's, looks like it's being looked at for protection. There is wetlands and a stream and there's a decent one acre field at the bottom of the hill on Marsh Road, that would be within the open space as well. But, so we propose four lots on, on Old Stage Road, they go down to the, they're over three acres, but the open space allows you to go down to three acres.
Yeah.
So we can get four if we go five acres, but they, Marsh Road is, everybody probably knows, is not very good, it's better at the bottom where the field is. There's a house right adjacent to it where the field is open, it's really a nice piece down, down at the bottom. But four lots, all over three acres.
So this, this whole bottom piece, including that field, that would be left in conservation?
Yep.
So the field would be maintained for hay or?
How, whatever, yeah, whatever the board would decide and how the open space documents would be drafted up. And one of the other kind of interesting things which you guys probably know is there's some state champion tree up on Old Stage Road that has a plaque on it and stuff. That's not in the open space, but it's on the property.
Yeah.
And it's on, proposed on one of the lot lines, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be touched.
Okay.
I don't know if you can even touch a tree that's registered like that. It's getting pretty rough, but it's a big one. So I'm really here just to get feedback from the board and if this is a feasible layout and, and I know, as you said, everything's non-binding, so.
Sure.
About before, we did do a complete survey of it, wetlands were flagged and located, shown on the plans, we did test pits, four test pits along Old Stage Road. And one of the lots contains all the stuff that's there right now, the two barns and the house and the, and that stuff is all on the third lot as you're looking at it.
And that was, that would stay that way, right?
Yeah.
So that would, okay, so you're looking essentially for like three new buildable lots?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
And are these burno pools or what is the wetlands consistent?
No, there was nothing, no burno pools identified, I mean, we could, it's perfect time for him to go out now to look at it if that's an important. But the one up front that kind of looks suspicious is actually an excavated area that somebody dug out and left and unfortunately turned into a wetland. So, the topsoil there, yeah.
Question, and kind of a gem as well. So I read the open space regulations, the specs for it. And I think what it says is that fifty percent of the buildable land has to go into the easement. So I'm wondering whether you know at this point what, how much buildable acreage there is on the park?
No, I did fifty percent of the overall, so I will have to look at that.
Because all, I mean, if that, if that's the case, and I think that was very clear, I think it's gonna be close because you got wetlands up here in these lots too.
Yeah.
So keep me honest, but the way I interpret open space and just bear with me because we haven't had one of these come before the board.
Yep.
Like, I don't think since I've been on. So my understanding is that in the agricultural zone.
Yeah.
What you would do is you would take a parcel like this one and you would determine how many lots could you put on this parcel? Now because it's an open space, you're allowed to then, instead of five acre zoning, you could say on this, on this particular lot for buildable lots, how many three acre parcels could you put on this? And then based upon that, you would need to put fifty percent into conservation, but whatever that number is, that number is four, that number might be five, you can configure the other lots however you want, they don't have to be three acres. They can be, they can be less than that, they can be bigger. So just, I would encourage you to take a look at our, at that open space subdivision regulation, if you have questions, you know, ask us.
Yeah, because the way I looked at it was a five acre.
Yeah, no.
And then, then got to four lots and there's a calculation, if you have any regulations that proves that, but if you prove it out for three acres, obviously that number's gonna change.
It could, now, but, but there is, like, it's based upon buildable land too, so if you, if you had, you know, take the open space away, you're like, oh, I'm trying to carve off a five acre piece from here, it's supposed to be five acres of buildable land, so if there's wetlands in that, you shouldn't be including that. There's steep slopes, you shouldn't be including that.
And that is actually the calculation that I put on the plan, so there's about five and a half acres of non-buildable wetlands, slopes.
Okay, sure.
Regulations, so we're after having regulations. Four, five acres, but if you prove it out, three acres, obviously that's not gonna change.
It, it could, now, but, but there is, it may give you an option, right? You might be able to put another lot in there and you don't, and obviously it's, it's about like, you know, how do you market these? I mean, yeah, you could maybe carve off a, I guess theoretically a half acre lot, but maybe that's not something that you'd wanna market.
Right.
So.
So is it based on lot size by soil type? Or what is the, what is the lot size in the open space?
So the lot, so the lot size is dependent upon what the state would allow for minimum.
Yeah.
So you need to be able to, it needs to have, you know, allow for subjects.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, it's not unlimited because you need to figure out how many, if you did it in three acres, like how many could you fit?
Right.
And you can't have more than that.
Right.
So if it was, I'm making this up, if it was six lots, you couldn't put seven in.
And is that based on a calculation or based on physically laying them out on a plan?
It's, might as well, in some way, shape or form, you need to, you need to prove to us what you could put there. I don't know, I don't know the way to describe that, but.
Yeah. You would just do a yield plan where you'd look at and how, you know, what you can lay out, and you'd have to factor in roads and whatnot if you're doing a conventional subdivision, so how would you get three acre lots on this parcel where the three acres are buildable acres for each lot?
Yeah.
And then the lots, when you do, the open space can be whatever.
Correct, you have flexibility there.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily.
Not whatever, but to me, the, yes, lot size, but lot loading, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
And a very detailed description of the options for the open space. It could be owned by homeowners association, it could be given to the state, to the town, to the nonprofit.
Now, does the town, does the town accept? And I don't know if that's what they wanna do, but does, does the town do that?
That I don't know.
Conservation commission would be the one to take that?
They might, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if they could.
And can.
He's the chair of the conservation commission, they would ask him.
So this would increase the traffic, I suppose, on Marsh Road as well, right?
Not if we, we did the lots up here on, on Old Stage.
They would access it from one oh nine?
Yeah, you would have.
You ever driven on Marsh Road from local well?
Yeah, the conservation property's right there.
It's getting a little rough.
Yeah.
Yeah, this section.
Well, that's what I was suggesting was that.
I mean, I think the town's supposed to maintain.
Yeah, I would just, I would say, yeah.
Like maybe once a year, I think it's on every five-year plan, it's just.
Yeah, it's quick to move.
Is it, is it opening in the winter time?
So the town doesn't open it, but the locals plow it. It's a good fishing hole for cars, I think it's a GPS road for tow trucks.
The town goes through, they're one of those paper things and levels that have.
So, well, that's the problem, they haven't and they should, because if they did, this, this whole stretch from here to here, if they just fixed the culvert or the ditch on the side of the road, it wouldn't wash out into the road.
So do you have any other questions for us?
I don't think so, I think that, I mean, obviously I got some good stuff about the three acres and stuff and fifty percent buildable has to be.
Yeah, okay.
Just to give you.
I mean, yeah, no, go ahead.
I was just kinda procedurally, to do the open space subdivision, it's a conditional use permit, so that's in, I just had it, Article twelve, Section B, Item two is the conditional use permit and the standards for it, so it'd be the conditional use permit plus the subdivision application. And, and there's also within the open space development ordinance, there is, flipping pages, kind of a section on detailing kind of the ideal areas for that open space and some information about that beyond just that it's fifty percent of the buildable area. It's, you know, similar to what you would see in another community for, yeah. I think there's more of a focus on like more holistic ecosystems and agriculture contiguous connections with other areas, scenic views, and there is some reference of recreation space as an option, so.
Anyone else have any questions or comments or?
Sounds like a very good use of that particular piece of land.
It does.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, thank you.
Great, appreciate it, yeah, thank you very much. Alright, next on the agenda, Sean Manning.
Do you want your other plans, sir?
So this is another conceptual review for a property that is on, oops, sixteen?
Evening board members, I'm Sean Manning. I'm the owner and manager of White Birch Armory, indoor range in Dover, New Hampshire. That range, it's a sixteen lane indoor range that we opened August first of twenty twenty. Company's been around for about ten years, started as wholesale, then went to retail, online sales, law enforcement, federal government contracts and some export. If you remove the big flip, the second staple packet is the property that we're looking at for a second location. So we were looking, we're looking at expanding into multiple indoor range locations, we were looking at Southern Maine, Lakes Region, but we've always been looking for a large enough piece of land for an outdoor range. There are so few of our between and the conditions have to be right to make sure that it's safe. So one thing that's unique about this property, that last page, you switch it to landscape view, on the left you've got White Mountain Highway and it printed off a little bit faint, but this section here is, I believe that's thirty-three shooting positions going out a thousand yards. Now.
My house.
Well, the, the ridge there is one good natural feature that would keep the rounds down. The, the boxes on the left, that would be a three-walled structure, each of those thirty-three lanes would be a five foot wide stall. As is depicted here, it's twenty-five yard walls and at the end of those walls at a forty-five degree, there's another one foot section of AR five hundred hardened steel at forty-five degree angle, so your window is three feet. So those lines going out, if you're in the middle of that shooting stall and you were to shoot to the extreme left or right, that is the fan at the end at a thousand yards. The ceiling would also be extended and there would be a angled front to keep the rounds down. I believe on this property, from the lowest point to the top of the ridge, it's about a hundred feet of elevation change. If you have a very large caliber rifle and the person is using a scope and they, they turn their dial the wrong way, the maximum minute of angle or elevation adjustments they have, even with the largest caliber rifle round, if they made that mistake of turning the turret the wrong way, those rounds would still be impacting on that natural terrain feature.
So if I'm right, this is, is this starting at the flattest point there or is this actually downhill?
This is.
Because I know the land over there and it's.
Yep.
Pretty much as soon as you have sixteen, it starts to drop down.
Right, so it is mostly clear cut, there, I think there was some minor quarry worked on, on that property before, so this is not a, a set in stone location. I wanted to start the conversation because either towns are interested in learning more, getting more of the specifics, or they grab their pitchforks and light their torches. So I did speak to the civil engineer, we would be doing a much thorough, much more thorough review of the property, full wetland study. In that agricultural zone, indoor recreation and outdoor recreation are conditional, conditionally allowed. So if this was a potential location for the outdoor range, it would most likely come in multiple phases. So I'm sure the area of most concern is the long-range rifle range. There, there are other areas of the property that could be used for shotgun sports, trap skeet, sporting clays, probably in the, the lower portion of the area. Extending past that long-range building, you can have HESCO barriers, do you know what HESCOs are?
No.
It's a collapsible mesh container with a very heavy-duty fabric that you can fill with gravel and sand and everything and stack big walls. So we could extend that beyond to the left and right border of that, the long-range shooting range, just for additional protection if we wanted any, any other small pistol range or shotgun sports or anything else. So the other packet is, it doesn't entirely pertain to this project, it does have a lot of our history, safety rules, which pertain specifically to an indoor range, depending on what could be done with this property, that would absolutely evolve. Safety is absolutely my highest priority. I was a recon marine and scout sniper for eight years, when I got out, went to University of Connecticut for mechanical engineering, worked at Cold Defense as a test technician and engineering draftsman for four years, was recruited by SIG Sauer to be their test and evaluation manager, I was there for four years and concurrently for a total of six years, I was a master firearms instructor specializing in scope rifle classes at SIG Academy and then started White Birch Armory. In our second year that the range was open, we were awarded the National Shooting Sports Foundation Five Star Award, which at the time we were number fifty-four of roughly eighteen thousand ranges in the country. It was a two-hundred-page application, it looks at everything from your security systems, how you train your employees on safety, very, very extensive, community outreach, everything. So very proud to have received that award and I would absolutely be looking to receive the same kind of award for this facility.
And another thing is that this is actually a watershed, Cop Brook is a watershed for pretty easily, so that would be another thing to kind of take into consideration, how to protect that.
That's interesting. So I think probably one of the bigger complaints you're gonna hear is probably gonna be about noise, you have ways to, I know there's no noise ordinance in town and that's probably the issue because we don't really have anything that creates that kind of noise.
Yep.
I wouldn't wanna have an ordinance come in just because of one business, you know what I mean?
I understand, yeah. With the size of that property, there are, still are quite a few trees and natural terrain features that would muffle any of the sound, but also in that.
Shooting a thousand yards.
It's clear cut, like recently, right?
Yeah, you're not gonna.
At least six years ago.
That's, that's not gonna muffle much from here. From the, the proposed or conceptual location, we still would have to core out a, a lane just for it, so it wouldn't be bordered by a lot of trees.
So the shoot, the shooting, I guess the shooting boxes themselves, are they gonna be like extended out farther, I know you said they're gonna have it slanted, are they gonna have it extended out so that the noise is kind of directed to and?
Right, so if you have a five-foot wide shooting stall, you have your bench, you'd have a seat that you could adjust to the left or right depending on if you're right or left-handed, and then twenty-five yards further down, that five foot would go down to three feet for your shooting window to keep the, the fan restricted.
Yeah.
And the angled top to keep rounds down, but also along all of those walls left and right, there would be sound abatement materials, so not the conical type that you'd see in like a recording room.
Right, but something, something that'd absorb it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Which we currently have in our indoor range.
I'm sure, I'm sure it works well for two-two threes and whatnot, but not so well for fifties.
Correct, those are putting out more decimals.
So a couple of questions, like hours of operation that you would consider or you would think that you would be operating? Obviously weekends are gonna be busy, right? But just what is the typical, what would you, would you be looking at?
So for our indoor range, we open at eleven AM and we close at seven PM. We would never have anybody out there shooting when it's dark out.
Sure.
And I wouldn't want it to be too early either.
Yeah.
Our, part of the reason for that later start at the indoor range, we do have local law enforcement and the Navy training at our facility.
Okay.
On those earlier off-hours.
Yeah.
So that would be a discussion with the town. It would have to be before it gets dark and not too early to, you don't want.
So you said this comes, I'm not sure where this, where, where is this on?
So this is like, yeah, gate muscle, yeah, they're, they're, they're cleared up there. But on the right, it's on.
So, so is Wantons one of, is Wantons like lot four?
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, now I know, okay, now I know where. So Ballard's, or was this?
It's south of Wantons.
Oh, it's barn and drive, okay. Alright, so you got a lot of camps on the other side of that ridge?
Yeah, so just a couple of the things, that particular, that property has a ridge on it, it's, it's a hill, they call it Cook's Hill.
Yep.
And in our zoning, it specifically calls out any development, the planning board has the right to protect that ridge line from development. I think what I'm hearing doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna go up to the top of that hill and do anything with that, but just I wanna, again, like this is a conceptual discussion here, right?
Right.
We're not really getting into too, too much necessarily specifics, but just to keep in mind that there is, there are regulations around any development that may, that you may wanna do on top of that ridge.
Of course, if we were to, to have this as a, a location, I'd want it to be an example across the entire industry. Have it be a destination as well, so I, that ridge is phenomenal and.
It's a great feature for what you're doing.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say it's not, I mean, it's eight hundred and forty feet in elevation, I think at the peak.
So if there were, there are additional protections for that ridge, if there was the possibility for small, I guess you could call them cottages, for out-of-staters that wanted to spend a weekend either taking a, a training class or out-of-state members.
A retreat or just, what is it? Is it intended to be like a retreat or is it like for, you know, parties and things like that of like, whatever it may be, is it just for small cottages, I guess is?
Small cottages is what I was, I, I wasn't thinking of a, like a huge resort on top of the, the ridge, but it would all depend on what those additional protections are and would make sure that whatever proposing stays within that.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's an interpretation of the zoning, right? But the way I interpret it is they would, you know, limit it to no development along the ridge line, so keep that in mind. So Steve, did you wanna weigh in? And just, Steve is a, an alternate member of the planning board, so.
In a table that allows users, where does rain, outdoor range?
So there is a outdoor recreation and it says such as golfing, ballfield, ice rink, which would be a conditional use permit in this agricultural zone, so.
Does it, say that again?
Outdoor recreation, such as golfing, ballfield, ice rink. And then it does have indoor recreation such as bowling alleys, pool halls, arcades, that is also a conditional use in that zone. Cause I think to me, you, you might be talking about two different things, right? You've got, an outdoor range is outdoor, if you have an indoor range, that would be indoor recreation, at least that's how I would, I would define that.
The conversation spans both because almost no town or city specifically calls out shooting ranges.
Correct, yeah.
So if we wanted to maximize the property, if we wanted to get more utility and have this as our, an indoor range location for the Lakes Region area as well, that might be a twenty-five yard long, similar to White Birch, so the members in that area could use it throughout the winter. I would like to have the outdoor range be accessible throughout the year too, with that open front, but quite extended walls, you can retain a lot of heat, whether it be radiant heating or small space heaters at the shooter positions, but it's, if you are willing to have ranges as either indoor and/or outdoor recreation.
So I, I think I'm with Dave, like the challenge is probably gonna be, is the noise, the sound? Is there like decibel ranges that you could like provide as estimates? Is there a range within driving distance that maybe we could go to and?
There, there are ranges in the area and I'm, I'm not exactly ignorant on this matter, but like, so I guess the thing would be, I would, cause until you actually go to apply this, we're not gonna have any neighbor input and that's really gonna be the biggest input on this, I think.
Yeah.
By far and large, so, I mean personally, I'd love to see this, I, I mean, I, I've got an area I can do fifteen hundred feet, but this is double that, so it would be amazing, but I struggle with it in my own backyard because I got a neighbor up the street and he's just, it's. I struggle with it in my own backyard, because I got a neighbor up the street and he's just, it's, it's full tree coverage between, I got a highway in between. Um, he goes out with a thirty-eight special and I feel like he's in my backyard, so this is why it's, we, I'm, finding a way to muffle that. Is gonna be huge. I do have decibel meters and stuff, so if you ever wanted to try something.
Uh, we have one as well, um, that was constantly a back and forth for Sig and the academy. Their thousand yard range is right along, oh, what is that, is that one-on-one? Um, they're in Epping.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
They have a similar ridge, they, their thousand yard is up a hill, hill a little bit, I don't even know if it's that much elevation. Right past that, you're landing in the, the drag strip. But I understand, um, there's a lot of stigma around the industry, some people, they're totally fine with extremely loud, um, drag racing. But if they hear faint pops.
Bang, 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 yeah.
Yep, so.
I, I guess, I mean, I, I might, I would just be prepared to come up with ways to try and maybe limit the times, especially with the bigger calipers.
Yeah, the difficult thing is that there isn't a, anything specific, like what do we have to get?
Right, so I mean, I guess it's hard, we, there's no data here, right? We have no idea how loud it's gonna be, how far that sound's gonna travel over the ridge.
So, sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, um, you know, and. It's, it's one of those things where, I mean, I would literally wanna see data to shoot, before the neighbors even had input on what's gonna happen, because I'd wanna know. Okay, so we're getting three hundred decibels when we're at the other end of the shooting range, but when we go over the ridge, we're only getting twenty. And, and that might be what it is, but we don't know, and it.
So we may, we may want to hire, um, a third party. I mean, uh, if, if you're going to be, you're never gonna convince a neighbor that they, that they aren't gonna be bothered. By the noise of thirty people shooting all at the same time. But for us, we've gotta be convinced that, I think the, the key element is the, the seventh item. Um, in the conditional use permit says.
Right.
There would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health safety. And general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located. To me, that's the whole deal on the noise.
So, I think your bullet trajectory and stuff, you're, that's very easy to maintain, cause they're not gonna just decide to go up in the air, I mean, they're, they're all gonna drop, so.
Sorry.
Hopefully nobody's lobbing it.
Well, they can if he's got a, if he's, if he's got a narrow, but you can't lob them up, so.
Kinda like an amusement park, you have to be this tall to ride this ride and.
Right.
You can't have a, a very small caliber and try to shoot that far, lobbing it in would have, you, you have to have at least this minimum requirement.
Well, if, if, if the hood's only this high and your target's right here and, well, if, if a straight line isn't gonna go over the ridge, then you're not gonna get it over the ridge, so.
Uh, in the past, we have gotten law, local law enforcement improvement to fire, um, blanks. So has the primer, all the powder with a large caliber round, just no projectile. And taken decibel readings at the, the borders of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get a private consultant for that, but I, I would think someone.
I'm not convinced that we don't need to do that, there's gonna be a lot of interest in this, um, for sure.
Well, no, what I'm saying is I, I think it would have to be, like maybe with the police department or someone to get that.
I think you get a pretty good idea right now on the police logs, how many calls you're already getting.
Well, that area is still. Right, but that's potentially an areas where people shouldn't be targeted.
No, they're all legal, because I know several that they called and the cops comes in.
Yeah, we have a shooting ranger on our property, it's, uh, you know.
Yeah.
That's another thing that worries me with this area is that you have people up there that are shooting on, and they'll be shooting in your direction as well. Uh, so there's a couple of different things there, that people have these homemade shooting ranges out there. And then the other thing you have is Cock Brook as well, that I can see, you know, the noise and all that, and what you can actually use the area for is, is all top and stuff.
Yeah, I understand it's an uphill battle, um, we received our first noise complaint for the indoor range in Dover. Um, before we fired our first round in the range.
Yeah, I, I do understand that, and, and I, like I said, I'm in favor of trying to see it happen. I just don't know how the neighbors are gonna react to it and how to approach them without having the data to say and show that this can be done and. And really being able to say that, you know, the hours of operation, they're probably gonna have more to say about that than anything. Because I'm sure on the weekend, especially where it's up against the backside of the lake. Um, and you're shooting direction of that lake, that's, that's when you're gonna get the most complaints, if any complaints.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm gonna, um, ask some naive questions here, so I apologize.
It's, it's like fireworks, I mean, they, they calling constantly for fireworks, so.
Like potentially a way to try to understand what this, what the impact would be or not. Um, if it would be possible to, without spending obviously, you know, a big expense, but to, to set up a timeframe. Where you could have a local police department shoot off those blanks and you notify the public, okay. At ten o'clock, we're gonna have this many rounds, at ten thirty, we're gonna do this. Um, I think you'd get a good indication of whether or not, like from how far away you could hear this or not, right? But I think you'd wanna do it, um, you know, have it so maybe.
Multiple meters, readings too.
Right, but also at like, whatever, I'm making this up, but like ten in the morning and then ten fifteen and ten thirty, so people could. Like drive around a little bit in the area and figure out like, hey, where could I hear this and where can I not?
Yeah, we can definitely have multiple meters on the different areas.
I would also, cause they, you're gonna have the sound of Jake Briggs and everything else on White Mountain Highway, I would compare it to the decibel levels of those, especially motorcycles, uh, on the weekend.
That was part of a previous report we did with Sig was just, um, they did it for an eight hour period where they had a, a monitor just running. And then, uh, queue back to the, the peaks and yep, that was a, a truck passing by or whatever.
I could run an air chisel all day long at my house and this has no comparison to a line of Harleys coming up the street and passing lanes, so.
So just some, some other questions or thoughts, um, if you're shooting from a, and sorry, what did you call it? Like you're, you're shooting basically from inside of a structure, right? So you must be able to determine like, okay, this is the, um, you know, the average caliber that would be, that people might be shooting. If you're inside that structure, if someone is then, the structure's not there yet, cause you're trying to do a test, like. Is there a certain like caliber of blanks that you could shoot off that would be similar to what you would expect? A larger caliber, do you, do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
You're talking a long range, so you're not gonna have people firing on small arms.
No, no, but, but, so listen, I, my wife is into guns, I, I'm not, so be careful. Gun cabinet, I couldn't even know which end to, to use, I swear, but, um. But like if, if you're shooting, you know, a twenty-two isn't something that you would shoot in that range. But if you were outside, right, a twenty-two may sound similar to, I don't know, a caliber. I don't know, fifty caliber, if you're inside that structure.
Hmm, no comparison, but okay.
That's like a baby.
Yeah, so, so without the structure there and the sound abatement.
Yeah.
The readings that we're gonna be getting from large caliber rifles, rifles are gonna be higher than shooting from the inside.
Understood, so I'm wondering if there's a way that you could do a test where you're shooting something that you would say, okay, we expect that. If you were within the structure, this is what, how, this is the sound that it would.
No, I don't know what you got, not, obviously nothing's been built yet, but knowing a little bit about all this, um. So if you had longer booths for your bigger calipers, to, to really try and choke out a lot of that noise. Absorb it before it gets outside, is that something you would consider doing?
If we have a target decibel, then yes, I would be willing to do so, but if we have to extend the building five hundred yards. To shoot a thousand yard range.
No, 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 I'm not thinking that, I don't think you have to go nearly that far, but I mean, your, your gas expansion rates on a fifty cal. You know, I mean, if, if you're firing a three oh eight versus a fifty cal, you're, you're talking ten times the gas discharge from a fifty cal versus a three oh eight, right? Now, a three oh eight's pretty loud, it's common hunting rifle round, that's what everybody's used to in the area, but you're talking a three thousand foot range, so. In three thousand feet, you're gonna be wanting to, to shoot much bigger rounds, three thirty-eight lupas, all that other good stuff, right? So, if you're firing rounds that are that size, you're gonna wanna probably, I mean, I'm not saying that the three oh eight won't reach it, it will. But it's probably gonna be the majority of the rounds that probably that get shot on that range.
Yeah, two-two-three, five-five-six for the shorter ranges, that, that will be the most common round.
Right, second one would be your, your three oh eight, your, you know, then you get into your seven mils, your eights, your, yeah.
Yep, so other than that, those walls left and right and having sound abatement material going all the way to the end where they're, the plates at a forty-five. Can have small wall sections, um, protruding another foot. So that three foot window starts closer to the shooter position where kinda, if you know the construction of a, uh, silencer or suppressor.
Exactly, so that, that's, that's kinda what I'm saying, just, but like for like the fifty, like the three thirty-eight and the fifty, probably try to do something that's like twenty feet long for that to absorb it. Versus a five foot would take care of most of your smaller rounds, but it, it's just, it's the gas expansion rate. You know, we gotta, you gotta absorb that ultrasonic sound coming out.
Right, and so this being entirely conceptual, we would be looking to have the least impact. I don't wanna have calls and emails from.
And, and that's all I'm trying to avoid, cause I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you how to do all of this, it's, I just, I know the, and, and I listen to the radio. I've been listening to it for twenty years, so I, you know, like the fireworks go off and it's like all around the lake starts calling, it's like, come on, it's.
And I understand that no matter what we do, there are some people that are just not gonna want us to be there, I understand that.
I think the difference too, with fireworks, um.
Well, they're firing off at ten at night, so.
And this is gonna be for your open time presumably, uh, you would want to maximize the number of people that are using it. So.
We also don't wanna make people nervous.
Every day, boom, that's gonna happen, and if you're hearing that.
Fearless.
Every day, week after week after week after week forever and ever. That's gonna be much different from motorcycles going by your house or whatever, because that's a one time. You know, it may occur a lot of times during the day, but it isn't a constant. So I mean, I think that, that's why I think that. If you're gonna convince people that they aren't gonna hear this, or that that sound of the noise is not gonna be objectionable. Then you gotta have somebody other than you guys doing the measuring and setting up the study. So that, that's why I think we would be, it would be a mistake if we did not look for an expert on this exact. Kind of thing, and they gotta be out there, people do sound studies, I mean, this is not.
We would replicate the same study that Sig had done multiple times and we would work with local law enforcement to setting up the meters. They would fire the, the blanks, so they can confirm the readings.
Yeah, so what, what does a study like that look like? Is it, okay, here's where the, you know, the, the rifle was being shot off and then there's decibel readings of X here and then less out here.
I think, I think we would wanna see, I think we would wanna see some criteria, like, so we're gonna wanna hear from where Wantons is, because it's a business.
Yeah.
Right, we don't wanna impact a business in the area, I'm, I'm just throwing some stuff out that's probably gonna be the big items here. Um, the other side of the ridge where you have all the camps, we're gonna want some data down there, what the sound's like coming over the ridge. Um, I mean, I'm not, there's not a lot of houses up there, but then you've got, was it Raven Court?
More residential.
Raven Court, that was more, was this Raven Court right here, so.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it's loaded over there now.
So the other side of the highway, um, because you're gonna have the sound echoing back off of that ridge. Right, so I would definitely wanna know what those people on Raven Court, of course, their houses typically go down the hill too, so they might not have that big of an impact. But those are the areas we'd wanna make sure, and, and those are probably gonna be the people that are gonna show up complaining if, when, when this goes to be put in too, so. Those are the ones you're gonna wanna have answers for.
There's a ridge surrounding my house, it, it won't be able to lob one there.
Is that true?
But, but I do know that there are hunters back there, there are trails back there that cut over the sixteen and everything like that, so those people that might. They might be out there to say something, you know.
But, well, I'm sure it'd be flagged off, uh, after shooting.
Sure, but yeah, all, all of that.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's not just a, you know, firing once, it's.
It's repeated, on a daily basis.
But this isn't, this isn't.
So would you be doing, no full auto? Or would you?
If there was gonna be an event like that, it would have to be a, a set day approved between these hours, like a, maybe an annual event.
Okay, so typically, on a long range, you would not be just bang, 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 cause it, it takes time to measure them out.
Espe- especially long range.
Yeah, I, as, the longer the range, the more time you'll see between shots, you don't wanna get your barrel hot and then start walking.
Well, you're not blasting on multiple fifties right, right, one after another. Typically, it's.
Well, you do have thirty.
Yeah, you have thirty.
Yeah, so if you look at the most common rounds, two-two-three, five-five-six, that is by far the most popular rifle round. With the sound abatement and the natural terrain features and trees and everything, where is that decibel, decibel level? And then how much higher is it with that, um, fifty caliber, the large things, which. That is not gonna be a all-day long bam bam bam, that is the passing Harley.
And they, are they still shooting down by the landfill, the glass?
Police do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll hear that.
Well, they're only shooting nine mil.
Yeah, I know.
So we typically do sound studies to the property lines, but that's usually if there is a set noise ordinance. So we'd be happy to get the list of locations.
So my, my biggest concern would probably be the restaurant that's down the street.
And the homes.
And the homes in the area, and I mean, and not, and, and like I said, it's not like we're shooting the typical hunting rifles in the area that everybody's used to. If, if you're gonna be shooting the fifties and the three thirty-eights, the four sixteens, those are definitely a lot louder.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and, uh. Yeah, I mean, and, and I'm not saying that they're gonna be shot off, I mean, I, I think the last time I looked at ammo for the four sixteen, it was twenty-five dollars a shot. So I, I, I can tell people are gonna be just banging off.
Prices come down from there, but still very expensive, yes.
Um, you know, I mean, it, it's, you know, it's a good hobby, it's just, it's an expensive hobby when you get into the bigger stuff. So again, I, I, I don't think people are gonna be shooting them off, rapid fire, I mean, maybe a three oh eight or, but, yeah.
How many of these long range ranges are there?
Not a lot.
That members can regularly access up to a thousand yards, I don't know of another one further north than Virginia. So Sig Academy has a thousand yard, but you have to take one of their classes. Sig Experience Center, I think they've tossed something in there where you might be able to access that long range three or four times a year, but it's not regularly. The other range that you can get out to probably twelve hundred yards is in Littleton at Ridge Line. But again, you have to be taking one of their classes to use any of those long ranges.
Oh, this would be a unique.
There's a pit in Milton, I don't know what they're, I think it's on conservation now, but that will just be opened up for five thousand.
A five thousand feet?
Yards.
Yards, geez. Yeah.
I don't go to sniper in the Marines.
So the fact that it's a unique facility is great, I guess, if, if that's your sport. But from, um, a point of view of the draw for the number of people and the fact that it may be full. For much of its open time in good weather for sure. I would assume you'll be drawing from a big area. This is not gonna be, uh, residents from Whitefield, only this is gonna be. All of New England if there isn't another, uh, another range, so I, I mean, I think we have to assume that your. This model is gonna, is gonna generate, um, a profit for you, which it should, or you shouldn't do this. That means lots of people, so I think the, the, the idea that while there won't be, you know. You know, minimizing the amount of, um. Gunshots, I, I think that we, we should be looking at maximum, we should be looking at those thirty, thirty slots full. Pretty much all of your.
Yeah, what you minimum, what your maximum gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, that, then you can work down from there, but I wouldn't wanna, um, uh, try to convince people in, uh, that are gonna be close by. Um, that, oh, don't worry about it.
The problem is if we approve it, then it's good to go, and then when people come in and really start to complain, huh, you know, lose out the money, which. It's, I, I wouldn't wanna see it getting to something where it's like it turns into a big giant complaint pocket that they just shut you down. Um, cause even if we did approve it and you did all these tests and everything and it went through. And let's just say some people that were maybe farther out outside of that test started making the complaints on a regular basis, it can be considered a nuisance. Um, could go through for it, it could lose, it's, it's happened. I, I don't remember, I remember hearing about it somewhere over in Vermont, that was another one that was a pretty long range.
There was a, an indoor range that they didn't properly. Uh, yeah, there was a indoor range that they didn't properly. The roof that they created basically made a snare drum and amplified the sound range, yeah.
And in the future, would you do any manufacturing up there at all?
There, no, so we have our manufacturer's license in Dover. Um, but if you are taking components for an AR rifle, the the lower receiver, the buttstock, just those small parts, and we are. Assembling them, that is considered manufacturing, as far as CNC machines and raw materials and everything, um, no.
No, so you would manufacture those down in Dover?
If we ever did decide.
If you ever did and then just assemble up here.
Right, in, on this facility, there'd be a small uh pro shop, it wouldn't have the full gambit of retail offerings. There'd be eye protection, ear protection, ammunition, targets, cleaning supplies, uh but every form of rifle, shotgun, handgun. Uh, we would not have a massive showroom on this location, no.
Just cause the size of the lot is pretty, you couldn't put something there, you know, in the future, so that's why I was just asking.
Not not in the current plans.
Cabellas would look good, no?
So.
It wouldn't have a fire anymore. Yeah, the commercial component, I'm not sure whether it does.
So for Dover, because they looked at the revenue side and the square footage side and because. The commercial side was um ancillary and subordinate to the the primary business, it um it was not an issue. Kinda like if outdoor recreation, a a range is to be included in outdoor recreation, like it had um golfing, they always have a pro shop. That is the small retail aspect of the outdoor recreation.
I I think it's gonna take some convincing, but I I I can't rule it out.
So the next step for me would be to coordinate with local law enforcement for a uh decimal study?
Yeah, I think that would be worthwhile.
Okay.
Um, and then we can provide you with some some locations where we think we would want some decimal readings.
Okay.
I think before we go there, I really think it's a mistake, uh what the hell do we know about uh about decimal readings? Um, I I really, if you're gonna convince people that are gonna hear this, that they they aren't gonna be bothered by it. Then you better have somebody who's a quote expert, who's setting up the study and interpreting the results. Not.
So, okay, so does that exist, are there organizations?
The applicant. Providing the study, I mean, I I believe you would do an honest job, but. If I've got a house nearby, I'm not gonna believe that you should be running the study. The study should be.
Correct, so the the third party study that Sig had done, I'd speak to the um their facility's VP. To get a written letter of permission to cite the the report, which gives the full explanation of the decimal levels. Um, atmospheric um considerations, how on one day that's totally clear, it might be louder than a foggy day or or vice versa. Um, and the charts and ranges where, once we get these decimal readings at the different locations, where they fall in that allowable chart. So it would not be a uh just a Word document that I started from scratch, um and did a lot of Googling, it would be off of in comparison to.
But it's your data, which you should provide us with, I get I get that. But somebody's gotta interpret that besides the people sitting at this table in my view.
We need to, we need to. We need to validate that he uses a fifty cal, not a black powdered fifty cal.
Right, which law enforcement, I would have them sign off saying, they were the ones that conducted.
Which sounds like a penalty.
I I would believe our law enforcement, because they're the ones that are gonna be answering the call, the complaints.
I trust nobody but verify.
Um.
Trust but verify.
Well, no, I'm just saying, like, they're they're the ones that get the phone calls for all the complaints of what's going on, the noise, where it's generated, and they're they're gonna be more familiar with it than any of us here by a long shot.
Is is there an engineering firm that we can work with, that does that exist?
We can, we can find out, yeah, I mean, I can call Donna in Dover, who is the planning director there, just get some like some insights. And talk to talk to her um about, you know, how they approach certain certain aspects of it in Dover. Um, that's that's easy enough for me to reach out to her um and chat and just, you know. Get that that advice, uh, we're just gonna mention on the like third party piece, like the applicant, you know, the the burden is on the applicant to to provide the evidence. Um, so, you know, he should definitely be, you know, submitting his data and his studies, um, having the police department there and signing off and verifying that. It was accurate, you know, that the report is accurate is helpful. Um, you certainly can have a third party consultant review that. I think the, one of the things that's gonna be the most valuable um in the end is having some comparatives, understanding. Like what a number means to the average person, so like finding some everyday things that that might equate to.
Yeah, sure.
Um, well, is gonna be a thing.
Well, they're shooting every day up in this area.
It has to be a baseline.
So, there there's people shooting every day up here, and that's that that's part of the comparison is I'd be up there with a meter.
Absolutely.
When somebody else is firing off, what's the noise in this area to begin with?
And for an hour on Sunday afternoon, it's aggravating, I gotta tell you, because I hear it every weekend. And I'm not opposed to your proposal, and I'm not, this is, but.
I I do believe this is a good jungle land.
You're gonna have a hundred people, I would guess, because of the kind of business it is. It isn't gonna be, you know, a couple of people sitting in the back of this room when we have a public hearing and explaining all of this. It's gonna be a room full of people, um, and I I just think we have to, we have to do our homework, you have to do your homework.
Yes.
And it's gotta all be done on on a bump board and very transparent basis.
I would concur, cause part of that, as you know, when you have. A crowd show up, the part of it is the appeals process and challenges. So just for your sake and for your sake, having every, all of your I's dotted, your T's crossed, having all of your, you know, having your third party studies and all of that. Just helps make sure that everything is by the book, all of your evidence is sound. Um, and helps keep everyone out of court should someone choose to appeal any decision.
Uh, so John, you would.
What the dimensions you're shooting actually, I'm not here, is it that good, so?
Dimensions of the shooting range, uh, the max distance that we're looking for is one thousand yards.
Okay. And what's the width?
Uh, totally depends on uh a thorough study of the the property, the wetlands. In the sample, there was thirty three lanes that were um five feet wide each. But this would be shifted around to make sure that all of the rounds were impacting. At the bottom of the ridge, staying on the property, um, a nice flat surface for all of those shooting positions. This is a quick depiction depiction of. So they're starting here, but this could shift down, this fan could go up here. There needs to be a lot more study on the property itself.
Yeah, and I still don't think it's gonna be a huge issue.
The thing to do when I was using one of the indoors, but no. I don't think you have a quarter.
Well, what are they, uh, five, you know? So the other side, the other thing, the other thing with that, one.
Yeah, you're not gonna have that little fire alarm, which is special, and second of all, there is not a lot of competition that they're gonna.
No, but on the board itself, so you see.
Yeah. Yeah, it definitely be a sidewalk.
Yeah, we're gonna have a site, either.
Like, once you know what those lanes are gonna be, um, you know, have the board.
Size of the problem is, well.
It's it's a big round, it's a good news for.
And it's something else that's a good for a region.
And once it's officially before the board, the board would schedule a sidewalk, um, and that would be something the public would be able to attend. Um, so it's helpful for you to visualize, helpful for the, you know.
So is that a sidewalk with a demonstration with the blanks?
No, I mean, you could, I guess, I don't know.
I I mean, well, so when we do a cell tower, you do, you float balloons.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, it's not, yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, and.
You can set it up.
I'm just, and, you know, I mean, we just don't wanna do what someone recently did and say you can't see the balloons, I mean. You know, and then had a had a house full of people saying, oh, we saw him, so.
Difficulty. Difficulties if they were gonna be on site for a sound test, they're gonna be hearing what's there, what's in the sound.
Well, so I think that I think the target of the the goal that would be to have them go in different areas of the property and hear the difference in this decimal meeting meeting, so.
So, yeah, so that, I I I'm I'm with you on that, I think you'd have to be careful about how you organize that.
Yeah.
You can say careful, it's just to to for people to get an actual understanding of what the impacts are gonna be off the property.
Yeah.
It it's not realistic for somebody to be standing right next to someone far away at one, you know.
Oh, absolutely, not not at the fire range, but do you have a portable booth by chance?
Yeah.
That would like, no, I'm just, I, so like a makeshift booth with the sound detonating to show the difference of it, or do you have any data from someplace that has it?
So one thing we could do. We have a Connex container. It's not twenty five yards, um. We could put that on the property, put this sound abatement material, um, have that three foot window at the end.
Right.
And. But that's also not ideal, cause that's metal siding.
Well, you, yeah, the metal, yeah, you get a metal structure and.
Uh, we would have to construct something to, if we wanted to be close to what is proposed.
I mean, so you're talking thirty three booths, right, thirty or thirty three?
That was, uh.
Roughly, some somewhere in the thirty range, so I mean, that potentially has a lot of, a lot of noise coming out, and like I said, there's no noise ordinance in town. Because we haven't had anything in town that really creates that kind of noise pollution, as they call it. So, I I personally would just make sure that I was covering my ass if I was gonna spend this kind of money to go into something, to make sure I could show the neighbors.
Is is there anything um somewhere in the US that is similar to this?
Sure, outdoor rooms.
Yeah, west, yeah, where there's.
Like, look, as far as like having those like sound abatement um buildings.
Yeah, um, some ranges, you're just lying on the ground, that is your outdoor range.
Right.
There are ones that have a um kinda gazebo.
Okay.
Roof, then there are ones that have, that restrict the the lateral fan and the, uh, they call it no blue sky. Either an angled front or angled end to the roof or past that, they'd have on uh telephone poles and then. Either metal or wood material further down, so if it was to be shot at a high angle, it would impact that and deflect before continuing. So if I'm, if I don't have a um, no, get the heck out of here, then I can start the the process with the. Uh, third party noise study, if I can get the locations of concern beyond the property lines.
Yeah.
What's the opinion of the board of the percentage of its of this uh being successful?
Well, see, I I have a hard time determining that, because I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, I don't know what the sound is, so.
Well, I mean.
I don't know the neighbors, so.
You see, you're trying to figure out if you're shooting, you go, oh, so you know what'll happen.
Well, so.
The sound will carry them through the ridge.
There are a whole group of people that don't want it, and then some of them will appeal it.
So let me, let me ask you, let me ask you this, um, so the, I don't know if you know where the the Chinese restaurant Wantons is, I think it's on this lot right here. If you were standing like outside in the parking lot there and somebody was utilizing that range and you have now the sound detonating equipment or these buildings. Would you really hear it?
Uh, I'll get some baseline readings.
Okay, but just, just asking for the, so, I'm not gonna hold you to it, I'm just, I'm just, I'm curious.
So I'm 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 sure you're gonna hear it. But is. Can I just point out that though?
Like, is it, is it possible that you wouldn't hear it from there?
Would you hear something? Yes, I believe so, from that location, even if you were angled away, if you have.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, a larger caliber round, it could be a small pop, because even if we're muffling it right there.
Sure.
At the sheer position, if it's breaking the sound barrier, even if there's a lot of trees around it, you might hear a faint crack.
Yeah, okay, alright, I mean, so Steve, I.
I would say don't waste your time, because it's it's gonna be, it's gonna be drawn out, it'll be appealed. It'll be, you have a room full of people, just like you did with the Dollar General.
Wantons is the next building over from that property.
Yeah, you know.
Well, no, it's a house of the dead.
Just trying to get an answer, what'll happen, you know what'll happen.
So, so I know, I I know, and I'm, and like, so personally, like, I'm very curious.
So guys got something else.
And I think this could be a very good thing for the time, right?
But I don't think, I don't know, he might.
But as far, like, there are, there's a lot of residential properties, like. Potentially within within an area that that you could hear this, so I I.
That, yeah, that that's your focus.
That's, it's the sound, like, that's, it's the sound issue.
Yeah.
It looks like a park is down the lake too, it really is, and.
So, so absolutely, and and potentially because you're behind that ridge, you might not hear it on the other side, but I I I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah, and we, in this noise study, we would compare it to what is the the ambient noise?
Right?
How does it compare to a lawnmower and other set decimal noises that people can relate to? And how often are they already hearing louder things at that location from other sources? Where the occasional Harley from our range, that larger caliber round. So at that point, if we can say, we are not exceeding what you're currently experiencing, it is just a a different form of noise. Then ultimately, it's gonna boil down to how many people are just opposed to the firearms industry. And yes, they very well could fight tooth and nail and not want us to be there, but that's what we face everywhere we go.
I will say, for someone to appeal, they have to prove standing. Um, so that means they have to show that there's a direct harm.
Are you shooting? Are you shooting north, south to north, are you shooting west to east?
This looks uh west to east.
This is west to east. And what it doesn't show on the map is Scrivener Hill, this is all right here on this map, this is like coming out.
Yeah. West to east or.
It's all condensed area.
Northeast.
Where is it?
I believe it's west to east or.
Oh, you're right.
Towards the northeast.
It's on the east side of uh Route sixteen, shooting away from the highway, so it's shooting east.
Almost at Pine River Pond.
On your, you're shooting west to east.
So, White Mountain Highway, if we started positions here shooting west to to east, or up to northeast.
And this is, uh, I think that's our property.
With this one here?
Yeah.
We go from from that, there's a stone wall runs up through here. And there's an iron stake and comes down, and then droves down like that, that's all mill come up, but from here to there, we go right to the river.
It does, yeah, it connects, it connects to yours.
Huh?
Oh, yeah, that's, it's over there.
Okay, he's walking for one.
But you're probably shooting right into a bank.
Right, right, Ridgeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, un-unfortunately, I I can't give you any indication without understanding what the noise impacts are gonna be.
I think there's two things we gotta really look at here, one, we're gonna need to have that study, like, so nothing given, nothing gained, right? Uh, that's really what this one boils down to, you're gonna, if if it's a possibility, you gotta try something. So you're gonna have to try and get some kind of noise study done and convince those that either are opposed on it or. Don't like the fact of what it is, I mean.
And would you do any construction over the Cock Brook?
Um, I know that there was two small bridges that were permitted and one of them just has a steel plate over it. Um. To have access to different parts of the property, we had to permit one more section to get over it. Um, but I don't plan on redirecting any of the the wetlands and.
So it was permitted, but they haven't built the bridge?
I believe two of them were.
Two two permits were done, and how long ago were they permitted?
I'm not sure, the current owner.
I think it only lived for five years.
Coleman.
McDonough.
McDonough. Well, I I was just asking, cause as conservation wise, and that's a watershed until I, one of our. Basically tourist attractions here is Pretty East Lake, one of them is just, you know.
That's that's the other thing to look at too, I mean, you're, how's the noise gonna impact one of our biggest tourist industries? Which is the lakes, so and you're right on the backside of one.
Uh, I understand the importance of this noise study and if the initial readings um verified by third party are too loud at. Um, at restaurant, the residences, um, and we're not able to easily um mock up. A sound abatement example and reduce those numbers to acceptable levels. Compared to what they're currently experiencing, then it's kind of a moot point.
Yeah.
More mund- mundane items.
Sure.
Um, so if you do go forward, so yeah, so you've already kinda identified some sound study issues in areas, um, so you know. Something over on the lakeside, um, on what road is that over there?
Byron.
Byron, yeah, so something over there, the restaurant and at the, like, where the residential areas are.
Byron, right.
Let me, let me work with you to come up with some different locations, I think.
That'd be good.
So then, so as as.
So, also probably up by Johnny's, because he's gonna be on the top of the ridge.
Yeah, yeah, um, I I honestly, I think there's gonna be a lot of locations that we're gonna wanna um wanna understand what the impact's gonna be.
Okay.
Um, Pine River Pond, which is just over the ridge, there's four hundred plus. Um, Pine River Pond, which is just over the ridge, there's four hundred plus homes that are on the lake and a lot of other homes around that. Um, if there's any. Like significant sound impact there, there is going to be four hundred people plus at this hearing. So just.
Some safety studies as well, you know, that people haven't walked off a quarter mile down the road from a gun range like this. And started popping off shots at a store or something like that. You know, it's a good sell.
So I, I'm not sure that that's anything that he needs to prove to us. That's not.
No, not to us, but if it went forward.
Yeah, when you're getting into weeds like that, then it's a. It's not worth the the fight because. Some people think that if there's any kind of range, um, all the rounds are gonna be landing into their backyard. When we can control the the rounds on the property and have it be far less dangerous to you than. Uh, the person that is texting while driving on your drive to work. So, but some people regardless of. Uh, whatever is said or studies presented, uh, they're just opposed to it. So. Starting with the noise study to make sure that it would not be um an increase in. Noise pollution compared to what they're already experiencing at whichever list of locations you give me, we can start there.
So the mund- mundane things is um definitely check uh what your wetlands impacts might be. Um, and check that if anything was previously permitted, that those permits are still valid. Um, so that would be that piece. Uh, acknowledge that if there are any wetlands impacts, you will need to make a visit to the Conservation Commission as part of a development uh proposal. Um, that in addition to just the, you know, the. Shooting range areas, that any other apartment. Parts of the business would all need to be part of that holistic site plan. So. You know, understanding the number of people that might be there on a, on a given day, how many vehicles that is, where is the parking for that? Um, the store, you know, the shop, that if you're gonna have any, uh, like you mentioned, potentially having some. Not residential, but short-term stay pro- uh space for folks to come and have a retreat or whatnot. Um, understanding where those are, what the, kind of what the the terms are associated with with staying. Um, and how that would be. Not necessarily managed, but just understand, like same as the others, like understanding the hours of the business and how that would.
Am I understanding correctly that I would complete the noise study, noise study uh first and foremost. Go through that at another meeting. So you have an idea of how it would compare to at those locations.
There's probably no reason why we couldn't. So I think we would need to notice that the noise study is happening, right?
Right.
Um, I don't know whether is it reasonable to have another conceptual review after that's done? Before you get into any.
Good.
I mean, I if.
I prefer that.
Non-binding ways.
Cause then it might give us an indication, like, okay, how did that go, right? And and what kind of concerns are there? I would expect that you might get a lot more people that would come to that hearing, but um.
But if it's a conceptual, it's not a hearing, it's just a meeting.
I would definitely, I would definitely make sure that you do the noise study at times that people in the area would be home that are gonna complain about it, more so because. If you're gonna do this noise study during the day when a lot of people are gone at work. They're not gonna hear it, they're not gonna know about it, but then when it starts happening, they're gonna come and complain about it afterwards. So I'd probably try to fo- focus it on when most people are home.
They're typically conducted on the weekends.
Right.
Midday. Um, if we could have another conceptual to just see the results of that study so that, because it it is a uh. Quite the investment doing a full wetland study, um, civil engineering, art, architecture.
Yep.
So if we're gonna do another conceptual, that's a public meeting, but not a public hearing, which means the public cannot. Participate.
Unless you so choose.
We can choose.
So I I think we just wanna think through that. Once you get a room full of people, and hey, I got a question. Well, I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing, you can't speak, we we don't wanna go there. I think it would be beneficial to the applicant in this case to hear what they have to say.
Correct, correct. So, like, what you would just do is at the onset, Doug, you would state kind of.
Some rules.
The rules, yeah, and just lay that out at the beginning so that you set that expectation for meeting decorum. Um, and then you would get that first opportunity to sit down with the board, have your conversation with the board. And then you could say, okay, we're gonna open it up if there are questions. You would have to remind folks that. Technically, questions are supposed to go to the chair, so they should, you, audience should not be. Directly, so you would wanna figure out just how to manage that.
We have rules for all that stuff.
Correct.
Be good at.
Yeah. And and honestly with that, like, some of it would be, you could have folks come up, share their thoughts, concerns. When that happens, you don't have to answer. You you listen, you write down questions, you take notes. You would also be sitting there, write down like the questions and take notes. Then you could call, you know, call backup and you could. Address things to the board.
I'd suggest that if you need a, a reference on how the meeting should be run, then we should be looking into that ourselves, you know, we should know how to do that.
Well, I mean, it'd be like, kinda like the bigger ones we've had, like Dollar General and the cell towers. I mean, it's gonna be the same.
But those were public hearings that, we had an application before us completed. And all the information that we were gonna get. Right, this is a preliminary so that you can get an idea. You know, if the whole community is opposed to this, do I really wanna spend any more money? But the 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 sound study is is key. I mean, you gotta do that or otherwise, we got no basis to talk to people about it, right?
Right.
But but ag- again, it is gonna be very different from a major public hearing that we have held. Because there's been a structure to that, which this will be, you know, however we uh agree to set it up.
If, if that is optional, I absolutely would like the the public to.
Yeah.
I'd like to put something out on the uh Facebook pages. Just to try and, just to make people more aware of it. So and I think with this, you'd want everybody aware of it as possible. Cause you want the least amount of opposition to show up blindside on you.
Yep, and there is. There very well could be lots of opposition and if they raise a concern and I can um definitively. Explain to them why that is not a concern. Uh, some people, they they will listen, other people were, they will stay the same course and have an idea of how many. Um, just anti-fireing.
Anything. So, you know, some people are never gonna change their mind, they don't like change, they don't wanna see the difference.
Town's point of, official point of view, we wanna be fair to you, fair to the public, fair to the butters. And we're gonna go through a process and everybody's gotta be respectful and that sort of thing and. Your your thousand yard shooting area, is it gonna be just one area you're gonna shoot the whole thousand yards or you're gonna have different stations?
There will be other uh targets along the way. So we're clearing one, one straight. Uh, shooting fan with the thousand yard at the end and there could be nine hundred, eight hundred, seven hundred.
John will be standing in one spot.
You'll be, correct, same shooting stall.
What about putting up a, like a um. A building that you gotta open out to block the noise?
He, he is doing that. He is doing that.
Oh, you are?
Yes. With with noise cancelling.
I said my hearing is not good.
Yeah, I I'm realizing that. He'll wanna have you, John, listening from the gunshots. He can't hear your gun.
That's why I got no care.
Might be a good idea to touch faces with like that and so at least at least know what's going on here.
Well, yeah, I need to tell them anyway about the noise study.
Okay.
Um, so just, just thinking out loud here, like brainstorming, I don't know if it would be. If we provide you with a list of locations that we would like you to measure the sound from, right? Um, likely, most of these locations are gonna be like a public location, so it might have to be along the road. But John, I wonder if you would allow someone to be set up like, say, in your driveway? Uh, I'm just asking a question. So to do a sound study, right, you're close enough that you may or may not hear this shooting range. Of your house. Would you be willing to have somebody with a sound meter when they're doing the test? Do that from, say, your driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, my parents are al- along the lake in an area that might be a good spot, I can ask them. So what we can do is provide you with, hey, these are the areas, right? Some of them might be. Private properties that we've gotten the okay.
Okay.
It might be worthwhile for you to get some folks, before you do any of this sound testing. Get some folks up into the area where you would consider shooting from. And you or somebody else go around to those different locations and you'll go, okay, I'm on my cellphone, I'm, okay, I'm standing here, like. Can you shoot off a couple of rounds? If, if you think, wow, this is louder than I thought, or maybe you think, no, this is quieter, I didn't even hear it. You might get a better indication, once you do that test, what kind of challenges you might have.
Sure, so, yeah, it'll have to be coordinated with law enforcement.
But, but you know what I mean? Like, that maybe is a possibility. I'm trying to. Trying to help you out so you're not spending all kinds of money before you determine like, oh no, I didn't realize that because of like. Sound traveling through this valley, um, it might not be uh worthwhile versus. Wow, this is great. I didn't hear anything from this location. This looks good and we're gonna move forward.
Maybe even if they do something on Facebook to advertise that this is gonna happen, if there's certain people that are close to think that they are yard. Let them be open to it.
I think I'd be more of the official, the official test. Then we'll notify, when you do the official test, that will be notified and people will be aware of that. I mean, somebody could go on that property right now and and do some target practicing, right? And so I'm just saying that if if you have the permission to go and do that. And we tell you, okay, when you do the official test, we'd like you to do it from these locations.
Yeah.
If you wanna go and do that on your own.
It's typically not um widely publicized because that is um. Asking for, oh yeah, I heard it, it was the the most mind-numbing noise.
Well, so that's why I'm suggesting the meter out there a lot. So the people that are actually.
Many meters, law enforcement, they will know that it's occurring, they'll be part of the the test. And if they were to receive any calls, they know exactly what's going on. Um, but. Multiple meters at these locations, at boundary lines and the locations that you specify.
Yeah.
Scrivener Hill would be another spot.
Oh, they definitely gotta be over at twenty or like lot seventeen, for sure.
So what does the prevailing wind have to do with the sound? It's just like the rain, it's just like clouds, it's it all.
Yeah, the more of that, um, we'll generally muffle it. Uh, if you have a hotter humid day where the, the air is actually less dense. Um, it, the sound could travel further.
And I don't know that there's any prevailing wind on that.
Well, there's a pretty consistent wind up there.
You're at the top of the hill there, but uh, it's too bad they clear cut it.
Yeah, that is definitely a shame.
On uh, uh, Cooks Ridge?
This this whole lot, they clear cut.
I was up, up top there, um.
Enter the radio, I guess.
I don't believe it was cleared all the way to here, but um. The gentleman's home further up, up top. Um, we had parked there and then walked down to the clear cut on the top of that ridge.
Yeah. And that's, that's.
Well, that's exactly what I was, why I was suggesting.
Yeah.
Do a mock-up.
Yeah.
We'll take a baseline and then see where we're at and if we need to do a mock-up, we will.
Yeah, I mean, personally, for me, it's the sound issue, it's not the safety issue, like, I. Can understand like how this is set up. I think this would be a great location for that. Right, from a safety standpoint, right?
Good natural feature.
Yeah, so. Do you have any other questions for us?
Uh, I do not, um.
Do we have your contact? Yeah, so we have your contact info.
It likes you, you must be sweet or something.
Give us a couple of days to get back.
Sure, yeah.
Um, just with a, with some. Yeah, give me till Monday and we'll, we'll send you a, an email and give you some locations that we want you to check from.
And if you could include the uh, want to contact with the police station.
Uh, it'd be Mikey Fenton, Chief, Chief Michael Fenton.
And I will um. Pull up that third-party noise report.
Okay.
Get my hands on more meters. That'll be the first step.
You must have some kind of baseline for down there when you, you put a range in down at Dover, is that where it was? Yeah, you must have some kind of baseline that you did there, right?
Uh, yeah, it wasn't as thorough as the um, the noise study from SIG, which most likely in this scenario for an outdoor range would have to do.
Cause Dover's indoor, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if there's any other outdoor ranges that had to do a survey or a study and they set like a baseline or whatever, but to have some other. Data that's already been approved and if there's any issues with those ranges that might help with some of the complaints.
Yeah, I do have other industry contacts, National Shooting Sports Foundation, when they award five-star ranges for outdoor ranges. I'm sure I could get ahold of the um, Zach's another president over there, say, which outdoor ranges can you. Do you know of that encounter a lot of noise issues that did some studies that I can get copies of the reports?
Right.
Yeah, I will do thorough. If no outdoor ranges were permitted, so if you said, we're not gonna allow. An outdoor rifle range, or if you said nothing over three hundred eight, three oh eight Winchester. If you just said no rifle range, then are you also saying no sporting clays, no shotgun? If there was no outdoor ranges permitted, it is far too large a piece of land to not utilize.
Sure, so I think that the noise study is really gonna, really going to be the large uh. Large impact as far as uh what's going on here. I mean, and I mean. It's, it's really the difference of that gas expansion cloud, how fast it comes out, how, how loud that bang is. Um, and how much of it you can collect in that booth.
So is it less impact from uh this, basically what Steve was asking about, um, the shotgun, is there less?
There's less, there is less, yeah. And I wouldn't need anywhere near as large a piece of land for uh sporting clays.
And where, where might that be located on this site? Would it be closer to?
Um, if you're coming off of uh White Mountain Highway, I believe it's on the top left. Corner of the property, we very well could have it in this lower section here.
So on the sixteen side, not on the other, not on the Pine River side?
Close to the Scrivener.
Oh, okay.
Right at the bottom there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but again, that would be, once we were doing a full study of the um. Wetland study, civil engineer, getting all the elevations, how easy would it be to put in different stations? Uh, make sure they're angled in a safe direction. But, yeah, large caliber rifle rounds are um larger impact noise-wise.
I mean, may, and and it might come down to something as far as restricting the timeframes of the bigger rifles versus the smaller ones too. I mean, that, I, might be something to to barter with the community as to what they wanna see.
Yeah, um, Major Waldren's, they only go up to three hundred yards. They're right down the road uh from us in Dover. And they're extremely grandfathered. Um, I think. As soon as it's um daylight, you, they can start shooting. There's no range safety officers, you put in your code in the, the door and. Start shooting, uh, but they've been there for a long time. I'm not looking to do that.
Is that ou- outdoor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully, um. We can present all the information and if there needs to be compromises, we can find Miller Brown.
Okay. I appreciate your questions.
Uh, thank you for all of your talking.
Thank you.
Josh, what was the location that you, that you wanted a sound measure down there?
Well, I would say at least Scrivener area.
So, so when you say Scrivener Hill Road, do you, is that the same, you guys talking the same thing?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's only one Scrivener Hill Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So Scrivener Hill Road.
Johnny's, John's down the road quite, quite more.
You know where John's place is.
On the north side of his proposed property.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot one is John.
I live after Scrivener Hill. Just after.
So so it's, we okay to talk about this, if we're trying to figure out like where the best place is to?
Yeah, and I'm. Well, I'm actually deep in the woods there. Oh, yeah, what you're talking about, yeah.
I'd discourage doing it on family members or board members property.
Uh, okay.
It's just my, it I have no.
It muddies the waters.
Okay.
Yeah, it could.
It does, but at the same time, so like John's property literally is the backend of this range, there is no other dispute on that one.
I hear, yeah, I hear you, um.
There's the next road development down from this too.
Yeah, you just, I don't know, you just don't wanna.
Sound will travel down the water.
Perceived conflicts.
I absolutely, I understand that.
That's all, that's all, there's there's no real conflict, there's just the potential for perceived conflict.
So I think I think the advantage of saying u- utilizing John's place though, is the fact that he has a very wide open field. House homestead on the opposite end of the shooting range, so the loudest point that it's gonna be hitting one fifty-three is probably going to be his backyard.
So you're in a butter.
He is in a butter.
Yep.
So he'll have to recuse himself.
Correct.
Are you in a butter?
No.
Nope.
You're nearby, but not in a butter, alright.
I'm not sure he's gonna hear it with the ridge.
I have a ridge in the back of my house and I have a range there as well, so I but we go into the ridge, so.
I bought his property, I go all the way to the railroad tracks and I bought this piece of property right here. It's three hundred somewhat acres over the wheel.
So what's what's the development just past your place?
Washington Drive.
Yeah, so Washington Drive, we definitely wanna get someone there.
You mean Washington Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so.
I doubt that here down there.
I I'm Bar End Drive.
That so that's that that's all part of this, right, that's.
That's what we wanna shoot, well, that's what we wanna, that's what we want him to prove, is they're hardly gonna hear it, um.
It'd be nice to prove that nobody can hear it outside of his property.
Right, I don't know if that's possible.
Not gonna happen, but again, I mean, I I again, talking about big caliber guns. It's expensive to fire large caliber guns, so they're not gonna be fired nearly as much as a smaller caliber guns that can breach them.
I wanna be careful about talking about this too much, I I can understand what you're saying, I understand some of the comments that you said. There is not gonna be, there would not be another location similar to this for hundreds of miles.
There is, they're just not actual shooting ranges.
Not for that long, not for that sort of.
A a place we can go and.
Place you can go and you can shoot something that.
There's there's private ones everywhere.
No, there's broad and gun clubs.
But but.
Have these.
But I I think you need to be prepared to. Uh to have the larger caliber weapons being shot off there on a regular basis.
I I'm not saying no to that, what I'm saying is they're not gonna be a rapid fire, they're not gonna be a.
Like a machine gun.
Yeah, there are no machine gun.
I understand that, but.
And and he, that's why I asked him, because he and I literally asked him, are you gonna have automatics, and he said that would be specific. Days that they would try to sponsor something like that, so it wouldn't be a regular occurrence.
Do know enough that there's a difference between.
Let's hope he doesn't invite you.
Semi-automatic, so and a semi-automatic, you can shoot off quarter sheet rounds pretty quickly.
So you can, but now let me just, let me correct you on that, so when you're shooting long range. You do not wanna fire your gun very rapidly because it heats the barrel up, when you heat the barrel up, you you can't, it won't shoot straight, it starts to walk off on you. You ruin your gun doing it, so you're not gonna wanna fire rapid fire on a large caliber rifle.
Or ammunition, it's pretty expensive.
No, so so I I'm I, so I understand all of that, right, um but if this was one of the only. Public areas to do this within eight hundred miles. It could be, right, isn't it, he said Virginia was the next, the next location. This could be, this could be popular, right?
You also gotta look at the fact that how many people have large caliber rifles, so.
Oh yeah, no, I I think there's a lot of positive things a- about this, to me though, it's this, it's the noise and how how intrusive.
I would invite you to go to a gun shop and ask them how often they sell any ammunition rounds over three thirty-eight looper rounds.
But I'd have to go to everyone within the seven hundred mile radius.
No, what I'm saying is, no, no, you're not listening, go to a gun shop and ask them how many rounds of a fifty cal they sell compared to everything else. And what you're gonna find is it's gonna be thousands of small rounds compared to these one big rounds.
That's cuz they don't have a big shooting area like.
There's no shooting areas, there's not a lot of people having, and the guns are expensive.
There's a guy I've been asking I do a job for, and I think his shooting range is over a thousand yards. And he goes to Africa and he shoots lions and he has got some big rifles.
Yes.
And I asked this guy, I said, you've got different stations, where this gentleman, I did the job with Oskar. He has different stations you scan but out in the open, and people in Oskar do bitch about it. Cuz of noise, but they're big caliber guns, I don't try to choose.
But but there's gonna be big caliber guns.
There's gonna be big caliber guns here.
Within some sort of structure that would be sound.
He doesn't, that guy in Oskar doesn't have that.
Yeah, right, sure, sure.
I I don't know the exact number, but I I would expect to see at least a fifty percent reduction. In the long distance noise reduction because of what he's doing, he's only gonna be shooting out of a three foot window, what he said.
Alright, alright, I think we should probably.
That's a huge.
You got, you got Long Rid, Rid Road, you've got. Um Scrivener, uh Stoneham Road, you've got all this development in here. You've got the Scrivener Hill over here, um and then you've got all of this. On Pinerel Pine, which to me, that those are the folks that.
Right.
But if he's in, if he's in a bunker, and he's shooting east. Across sixteen, they're not gonna hear it.
Probably not.
But I think we wanna measure it there so that people across sixteen are gonna get that information.
And I wanna point out, the way he was describing he building the bunkers is it's kinda like a silencer on a rifle, so it's designed to capture as much noise as possible.
Of course, it is, but it's just a matter of like, what is that?
So by, but that's why I said, I think he needs to build a demo to mock it up, to be able to show the difference. But that's right, it's up to him, but that's that's kinda like, if he really wants to show that it's gonna be quieter, he needs to show that it's gonna be quieter.
Um alright, one more question on this and then we'll move on. Um if I sent an email to the board saying, hey, I've taken a look at the map. These are the locations that I think would be reasonable for them to do a sound check, is that okay to do that or not?
Nope, nope.
It's not, okay.
Conducting business over here.
Well, wouldn't that just be a meeting and in those meeting minutes, that becomes minutes, no?
Illegal meeting because the public wouldn't have contemporary, the public would need to be able to participate at the same time as you're having the conversation.
It would be a non-public, though, no, because they know this.
You can't, no, you can't do it, anybody knows it.
Send an email to one member at a time?
No.
I can't do that?
You're circumventing.
So you'll have to decide.
You can, so.
Can it be two numbers?
You and I can talk, is that correct?
Here, how's this, um I know, talk about circumventing. You could send an email, I know this is ridiculous, blind copy everyone, just put everyone's name, like, just be like, you're all blind copy. Um because then no one can accidentally hit reply all.
Sure.
And you would have to state explicitly, if you have a suggested location, please send it to me. I'm going to work with Amber to get a list to the potential applicant, you can do that.
Yeah.
Because then you're not having every, you can't have everyone.
Eight things.
I know, it's ridiculous, so that's okay.
We have to have it explained.
It's it's, and and that is even still kinda like circumventing ninety-one A. What I would recommend that you do is when you get here at your next meeting, just under new other business. Report out on that email conversation so that it does become part of the public record.
That's right, and that's what the lawyers would recommend to you to do, is to blank copy everybody on it, and you can you can have a meeting.
That way you don't have to worry about.
You can respond, you can respond to all.
You can't respond off.
To do this on a on a.
You are just, as a chair, you are just looking for direct input. That you need to collect information, from individuals.
Right, which doesn't go to everybody.
It no, but you.
Between us.
No correspondence amongst the whole board, um so, but you would still wanna make sure you disclose that. Um at your next meeting.
I mean, there's not even a law to vote on minutes to approve them.
Just gotta do them.
You just have to have a rough draft of them, ready at seven to nine hours, you don't have to vote on them or anything.
High high businesses.
It's too crazy if you don't.
So moving on, so board's business, um restoration bond for lot eighty, um or map eighty lot eighty-two.
No, 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 that eighty eighty-two is the name, eighty eighty-two blossom real depressed, map lot two fourteen.
Correct, two fourteen, um thirteen, fourteen and fourteen, all right, so. I know you sent.
So this is a driveway permit, does this cover this grading problem?
No.
Nope.
No, I I.
I read it, read it, read it.
I drive by there day, waiting to see it happening.
No, in fact, it says at the bottom, no structures including buildings permanent or portable signs, lights displays, fences, walls, etcetera, shall be permitted on. Over or under the highway right of way, and there's uh you know. Other language saying you can't do things in the right of way, so anything other than that driveway and constructing the driveway, that's all you're allowed to do with this, is just the driveway.
And but I wasn't the driveway permit a condition?
The driveway permit is a condition, but they also need permission to regrade this thing right away, yes.
And they don't have that, right?
They do.
I did see equipment getting dropped off there, so I'm assuming like getting it or?
I can't tell, you said it getting dropped up, I see equipment over there, but I didn't, yeah.
It's it's moving around on site, so.
Some piles of stone over there, I haven't seen.
There were there were definitely people on site the other day, so.
Alright, so is there anything that we need to do to act on this, or is this just a awareness?
Uh we, the restoration bond, like they put a dollar figure in there, um we didn't specify a dollar amount, so I just wanted to. Like, do you guys think that's good enough? Yeah.
Yeah.
This is for the site, not of not a state issue.
Correct, right.
This is, okay.
It was one of his fingers.
Yeah, okay, okay.
He's still got people, yes, he's got.
Alright.
So it's unreasonable to you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have the expertise to tell you what an appropriate amount is.
Was it the eleven thousand or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and this is to restore, finish the work that he's doing there?
The site, yeah, site.
He's got retaining wall, no way is that even gonna come close. That's 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 a joke.
Yes.
You could spend that just on moving the equipment to take care of the rest of that project.
That that wouldn't even cover the blocks.
Right, there there's no way that should even have been put in that law.
Well, we reject the bond then, right, I mean, we we don't have to accept it, we.
Um, so I I'd like to know how he came up with that number, because it's on the applicant to show. How it could be restituted for that, and I don't know how he could reseed and grass and maintain and fix all the issues he's has there for eleven grand. I mean, I I would expect to spend that on fuel alone.
Let's see, under those piles of stone.
Where are we gonna come up?
Um Governor's Road and sixteen.
Tom thing, he always had like a number, like off the top of his head, um.
So that's just if we, these screws.
If if he doesn't screw, we'd have to be able to go and reclaim it and finish it.
Well, he's he's trying to give just material costs.
That there's no.
That's all that is, is material cost.
There there's, yeah.
And the number is great, but.
I think the last time we had him do one for the lot across the street on Crystal Lane, he, we had to figure in the cost of somebody coming in and doing it. So um I I feel like this should be the same.
So in the um notice of decision, the condition was. The applicant will work with Horizon's engineering to set an amount for performance and maintenance security. For erosion control and revegetation.
So Horizon came up with that number?
That's what we asked him to do, you were, you were asking to do.
You know, the board asked him to do.
So then we should ask for the backup.
I do not.
I'd like an explanation of it, cuz it sounds really wild.
Horizons and and say, you need to have some backup and did.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not how it works.
That's exactly, yeah, you're talking thirty, thirty grand probably.
Slim chance he's not gonna finish, to you know, finish the whole building, the whole project.
I, well, I I wouldn't say slim, I mean, so it was, there was some fighting across the street.
Alright, so Amber, you're gonna, you're gonna reach out to Horizons to ask to verify that this is the amount they came up with?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And the the details behind it, like how did they come up with the eleven thousand, not just said, oh yeah, it was less than. Oh, is this only materials?
Just the tip of this.
Laboring materials, only.
Only the kind of what to.
Some kind of calculation, right?
So when you, yeah, well, they need a breakdown, we need to know exactly what, we need a breakdown of charges.
But don't we have to accept, ultimately accept this bond? We didn't, I mean, all we did was issue a notice of decision, which said, give us a bond.
Yeah.
And and Horizon, uh Horizons is going to do the calculations, they're gonna determine how how big it is. So if they come back and say, oh, oh, this is just for grass seed, um then I have to say, well, okay, that's not acceptable. Right, and we're gonna reject, we're gonna say, this doesn't meet the condition.
Yeah, cuz I mean, it's up to you to verify the conditions, and that they make the conditions.
Cuz in the, in the past, we've always voted to accept that, you know, the amount, you know, if usually because. Tom was in the business, he would say, oh, well, two thousand dollars is plenty. Okay, so that would be in the notice of decision, here it wasn't, so ultimately, we should be accepting this.
Well, we are, what, in the notice of decision, we we asked that he work with, um. Yeah, Horizons, to come up with that number, so I think it's a legitimate question, they asked, okay, Horizons, what is, how did you come up with this? And if they can come back and they can justify it, then they justify it.
And if they come back and say that was just the cost of materials, then well, that's not what we put a bond up for, we put a bond up for when the applicant cannot complete the job.
We we, we got a decision that just gonna hold him up for.
He's still on hold with the state.
But there's still other conditions that he needs to meet that have not been done.
That's what I'm saying, there's other conditions he hasn't met yet.
Yeah, this is the only thing, so no, this isn't holding him up.
He's already down in there.
That's what I stopped.
Alright, um let's see, I keep losing the agenda. Alright, um correspondence, the New Hampshire DOT driveway permit, across Nest Holdings.
It's just one of those conditions.
So this is the same project, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's gotten the driveway permit, correct?
Yeah.
Alright, next on the agenda is approval of minutes from April seventeenth. I don't care to second.
So I'll speak at once.
I'll second it.
Alright, alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Close, alright. And then next meeting date is June fifth, so anything other than what is, has been continued for. A while, the summer project?
Yes. There'll be another application, a conditional use permit, um for chickens.
Okay, alright.
Well, what, what was it?
In town.
At Forest Town.
Is it, uh, were you going with a number of chickens or just all together?
A flock.
A flock? That my dog eats or that, you know, that's survivable?
Hi, this is a native radio, zoning.
Yes.
Uh. Contractors yes, and if there's, we get different zones that are permitted use, down the lake, they're not, they're not permitted on lake, lake funds. Who enforces that rule?
Code enforcement officer.
That's what I thought.
And the three shoreline guys from New Hampshire.
And another one, I guess, in your house, it's being nothing done either. The answer to that question is nobody, the answer to that question is nobody.
Nobody's enforcing it.
No, they've, they've been around the lakes quite a bit this year. They've been around quite a bit this year.
The state.
The state has, yeah.
Yeah, so so John, if you had a question about that, I would encourage you to go and talk to the selectman.
I went down and talked to the building inspector, and he's a code enforcement.
He's he's.
And I got to, as usual, get snowballs, it's my, it's his job. And I got to, as usual, got snowballs, it's gonna compare, it's his job, why we paying and why we putting rules in, and we're not gonna enforce it?
So John, I am I am completely with you on that.
Was that?
I I completely, I'm on your side, I agree with that.
You can't discuss the code enforcement officer, I'm sorry.
That's. So I'm I'm not, so I, what I'm saying is, I would take that discussion to the to the board of selectmen.
All right, all right.
It could be, it's because the code enforcement works for the board of selectmen, he acts based upon what the board of selectmen tell him to do. I'm gonna leave it at that.
But if you wanted to get an answer on your question, it would be contact the state and ask them.
The state's not gonna enforce our zone.
So.
Not with the shoreline protection area, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's.
Shoreline protection, they will.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've had good luck with that in the past, huh?
So so I I think there was a comment that if there was a shoreline protection concern, maybe that would be something the state would react to, I have, I I can't give any indication as to whether that would happen or not, so.
When we voted on that contractors yet, there was a lot
Sure.
gift by up on the board at the time, I think you were too, yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
And lakefront is not zoned for that, you can have a snowplow pickup or something like that.
Sure.
But you can't have a bunch of equipment parked in there and then bringing in stuffs and brush and dumping it on your lot.
That's considered fill, and you can't do that without a permit. If it's on the two hundred and fifty foot lakefront, so that would be.
And I filed a complaint about it and it didn't go for any of us, I heard it's, well, you better sign a complaint, okay, I did sign it. You know, and it just irritated me a little bit, I'm still irritated, but I I went down the office this morning, and then what's the name, the town administrator, he wasn't here, so I will catch up to him.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, uh anyone care to make a motion to a judge?
Make a motion, Jerry.
Second.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.